Super.
Sorry.
And, no, that's great, Jim. Thanks for jumping in. And we do record these meetings and Carrie, I think, said she is recording this. So it does look like we are. So because if we don't take public comment, we'll go ahead. And then those who are unable to join us here for whatever technical reasons can watch the... So, um, so let's go ahead. Sarah, you want to introduce our guest today? We're talking about the Crisis Center Governance.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate everyone's patience as we try to get everything together here. This is a, this is really another great step along a road of incredible accomplishment that we've had with our Behavioral Health Leadership Partners, and specifically LMH Health and Burt Nash for their role in stepping up and really furthering their service to the community with taking a management role with the new Turning Point Crisis Center on the Behavioral Health Campus. So Bob can introduce the group a little bit more. But for the rest of the public, what I will say is that this, like Commissioner Kelly said, these meetings are for informational purposes only and for discussion purposes only, and no decisions will be made at today's meeting. Bob?
Thank you, Sarah. As Sarah was saying, this, we are excited and really pleased to have some time to visit with you and to have conversation with you this afternoon. In January of last year, we really started to drill down on the planning for the facility and for the operational plan for the Crisis Center. We are looking forward to an opportunity to come back to you in August to start to share some of the details of the work that has been done in that regard. But, you know, I think I said in January, we are at a point in this project where we're saying to ourselves and realizing that this is no longer an aspiration or a theoretical exercise. And so it starts to become, you know, a matter of working out details and relationships. And we feel really, our Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition partners are very pleased by the collaboration that has come forward by LMH Health and Burt Nash to provide leadership for the operation of the Crisis Center. What we'd like to do today is give you an opportunity to hear from Russ Johnson and Patrick Schmitz. And in addition to Russ and Patrick, CEO of LMH Health and Burt Nash, Jeanette Kirkpatrick and Stephen O'Neil are with us as well. We're going to let Russ and Patrick really kind of lead you through this conversation. The rest of us are here to help support answering questions. So we get an idea of a real interesting and we feel positive development in the approach for governance and leadership of the operation of the Crisis Center. So Patrick or Russ, I'm not sure which one of you wants to lead off, but I will turn it over to... Patrick, you want me to jump in? Is that okay?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Russ, Russ and I did not coordinate our discussion. So, but he is far more eloquent than I, and so let's have him get us started.
There's other words for eloquent, but we won't go into that. You know, I want to, I want to start off with saying that this has been a long journey. And as Commissioners, you have been with us on that journey. It wouldn't be fair to not call out Nancy, who has been unbelievable. And I know that Michelle and Patrick, you've been part of this too. So I also want to tell you that you've got a team with Sarah and Bob and Jill that, um, you know, I don't know what the right analogy is, if they're hurting us or what they're doing. But they have been a pleasure to work with even through disagreement. And nothing good in a community setting like this is without disagreement. You know, you can't pull this many constituents together without having that. That's just part of process. And, and you're, and you really learn the metal of a partnership through adversity. So I think with, you know what, I like what you said, Bob, about we are, this is no longer theoretical. And we're realizing so many things. And it's just, it's an honor for LMH to be part of this process, to work with our partners, to build this coalition. That was an idea of Bob and Sarah's three or four years ago around the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition and to see that coming to fruition. So I just want to start off with that. And then let me jump, Patrick, to just a couple of my thoughts on governance. Turn it over to you. You can see to my left or behind me, Jeanette, who has just been remarkable in her work of picking this up. You know, I went to her about six months or so ago and said, "Would you mind to take a leadership role in this?" Praise God, hallelujah. Wow. I make, once in a while, I make a good decision. So I, I think the things I think about this as we, as you think about governance and leadership of this Turning Point Crisis Center, the things I think about are what fulfills this notion of partnership and collaboration? How do we strike that right balance of principal partners? And I feel like in the proposal before you, we've, we've really attempted to do that, to have a deeply meaningful balance, if you will, of, of the county leadership and governance, of Burt Nash leadership and governance, and of LMH, and then creating opportunity for us collectively to also bring in other people into governance. You know, one of the things we've learned about mental health is it's a collaborative endeavor. And so we're very much committed to that. I, I think we had, you know, Patrick and I did some initial thinking. And frankly, we had to back off of that a little bit. And maybe we were a little too narrowly focused in terms of thinking about not, not this as ours, but kind of like that. And, and I think we've arrived at more of a "we" and a more inclusive program. We also, I think, have really sought to help create a structure that allows governance to do governance and management to do management. And one of the things that we've all laughed a little bit about, frankly struggled a little bit about, is using different words for those things. And we've had operations and we've had governance. And, and because we're in different kinds of institutions, we've had different ideas about that. But I think we've come to a place where we feel like we're sharing governance and oversight and authority with the right parties because we understand the county must have that and we must have a piece of that. And Burt Nash must have a piece of that. And we must make a board that, that recognizes broad expertise and diversity. And I think we're building into that a growing notion that your staff is championing with us about how do we be as broadly inclusive as we can be? So I think the governance proposal in front of you also has some very traditional elements of things that we've learned over the years that just plain work. Officers, terms, rotation, not being a representational board, but being an inclusive board. And those two can be different, and I think they should be different. I think we've learned, you know, that we don't want to be too dense with executive leadership from the two institutions on the board, that we might want to think more broadly than that. And so I feel like this first draft in front of us is a real solid draft. It's probably two or three drafts down the road. But I think it represents, if we go back to the key principles that, gee, Bob, I think we probably talked about those a year and a half ago, around how do we want this to look and feel and be different as a place of healing and opportunity for people in mental health crisis? I think we're reflecting those things. And I've been really proud to be a part of this team. I'm, I'm very excited about the future of it. I, I know that this team can do right by you in terms of the oversight and operation of this clinic. And I think with this balanced board, we'll have the right leadership and governance to help us do that correctly. So those are my initial thoughts, and Patrick, I'll turn it over to you.
Ash, Russ, I'm not sure. I figured you'd just build a foundation, but I think you constructed the house around it as well. So there's not a lot more that I can, I can add. You know, I can say that Burt Nash is extremely excited to be part of this partnership as the BHLC as a whole, but also in that partnership and the way the relationship between Burt Nash, LMH Health, and the county has developed, as is shown in this document. You know, the, to think when I came here three years ago, that three years later, we'd be talking about this kind of partnership, I would have never guessed it. And it's, it's come at a lot of time, a lot of conversations, struggles at times. We know we'll have more ahead of us. But I know that because of the work the BHLC has done, because of the leadership the county has taken in moving us along towards a vision, that that's what we're focused on, that vision of a system, of a process, of an entity that is focused on providing the right kind of care in the right manner to the citizens of Douglas County. And so we're really excited to be part of that and really fortunate that we have had the leadership from the county and the partnership from our BHLC members to guide us along the way. So that's really what else I could add.
Bob, what, what more, or Sarah, what more specifically can we speak to that would be valuable to the Commission?
Well, you know, I think, I just like to elevate and get a little bit more specific when you talk about collaboration. Just, you know, I think understanding the complexity of this. The challenge that we face is that we have people in our community who are challenged and who struggle with very complex healthcare issues. And some of those things are driven by mental illness and mental health-related issues. Some of those things are combined with real medical, need for medical intervention. Some of those things are driven by substance abuse and addiction. And frankly, some of those things are driven by, you know, those social determinants of health that conspire against them. They wind up in a really difficult time in their life for whatever reason.
Right.
You know, the challenge here is and has been to blend that medical expertise, that operational excellence that our organizations bring to the table, along with, you know, subject matter expertise in mental health, in suicide prevention, in substance use and addiction disorders, so that we can serve anyone in the community, regardless of the situation that they bring to us.
Right.
We have people who come to the emergency room, which if you're thinking about right care at the right time in the right setting, the emergency room is not the right place for this work.
Correct.
The homeless shelter is not the right place for this work. The jail is not the right place for this work. So we are building the right place for this work. And it's, it, like Russ and Patrick have said and our partners have told you, it's complicated because people are not widgets. You know, and they don't, they don't get good treatment when they go to one place that is focused in a particular direction. So what I am really pleased by is that the leadership of Burt Nash and LMH, I think, are fully embracing that idea of promoting integration across the system of care and building a system that really, three to five years from now, is going to be more focused on prevention, less focused on crisis. And so the particulars, I think, if you look at the particulars of the structure of the board, the breakdown of committees of the board, the operations of the board, it is a really solid structure from which we can build a very different type of Crisis Center than exists around the state of Kansas and is more in line with some of the newer thinking about supporting people in crisis, like from our consultants in Arizona and what, what we've learned, that we can take anybody who walks through the door.
Yeah.
Dr. Williamson has a set of principles. He says, you know, three principles. Principle number one, take the patient. Principle number two, take the patient. Principle number three, just take the patient. And I am excited that our partners have said, this is what we, this is what we want to do. We want to take somebody, whether the police are bringing them in, EMS are bringing them in, or a family member is, is bringing them in.
I think, Bob, you know, the, the thing I would add to that is I think the governance structure before you is both, strikes a balance of being a realistic governance model in terms of size and effectiveness, but it also balances constituencies. And I think that's a lot of what, Bob, I hear in your conversation. This isn't about LMH and what we kind of want to have happen at that Crisis Center. It isn't exclusively about Burt Nash and what they want to have happen. And it allows us through, it forces us, we don't need to be forced right now, but ultimately you build governance structures that outlast me and Bob and Patrick. So it keeps the institutions of the county, Burt Nash, LMH, the input of the BHLC in parity so that this broader vision Bob is talking about can be realized. And it doesn't allow, no matter how it's managed, if you will, because I do think we want to be effective and efficient around management. But governance determines strategy. And government, governance determines the overall direction of the institution. And so I think it will allow us to keep Bob's side about being inclusive, being the right place at the right time, being flexible if we have to, instead of, you know, this is my program and this is my playground and my sandbox, and I want to control it.
Yeah, I would, I would absolutely agree with that, Russ. Because had, had we gone down the road that we originally thought of an individual agency doing this, that's, it would have been very focused. But we got pushed, in a good way, to, to broaden that thinking and broaden who's involved in that, still keeping it reasonable in size and available for function, but broadening the, the oversight, the governance so that we can ensure that what is provided there meets the multifaceted needs of our clients because none of us are simply one thing. We are usually a combination of a lot of things. And our clients come in, our clients, our community members, come in with a multitude of issues that is best addressed singly as one team instead of saying, oh, well, we'll take care of this and then send you there. And then once they're done with you, they'll send you there. No, they need to be taken care of holistically, and this helps assure that.
You know, Bob, the only thing I would throw in at this point would be, you know, I, I think Russ and, and Patrick have really described it really well in terms of how their collaboration and partnership with the county. You know, I want to assure the members of the public that are on this Zoom call, another, you know, what this is all really saying too is this isn't a contract for service that we're providing, that the county has with LMH or with, with Burt Nash or even this new corporation. Because we have a governance model where we will have a board that will have representation directly linked back to the Board of County Commissioners who are ultimately responsible for the taxpayer dollars that are funding this initiative. You know, that was very, I, very top of mind in all of our, our minds as we looked at this governance model is that this is funded with taxpayer dollars and should serve the public good of the citizens of Douglas County. So, and ultimately, that was a result of a ballot initiative that the county commission put on the ballot and the voters approved. And so we will always have that link and that accountability that comes back through that. That, that is, it's so much more robust, it's so much more in-depth than just simply a, a contract for, for service that could be continued or discontinued. So I, I hope that gives folks some assurance that we, we are very invested into how this all comes together.
Sarah, you, you said it, that's exactly where I was headed, and you said it even better. I think that as Commissioners, you know, like anything important, there's two edges to this. But I think as Commissioners, you can be confident that we're creating a structure that reflects the accountability you feel back to the voters. And I think the other edge of that is it will take an enduring commitment on the part of the Commission to be a part of this because it isn't like, hey, you guys go off and do that. It is now, this is who we are together. And you all, the three of you have had a heart for this, and you've had a commitment to it, and that's been remarkable. And, and we're going to have to have that on into the future because this is a, is this is now a collaborative solution.
I, I would add two cents to just, to say, I really appreciate the summary of all, all three of you, knowing from the beginning what a big task this was, how complicated it is to kind of merge, to meld minds and hearts around such a complicated project, especially when it's circled by government and government money. It's just extra complicated and kind of fraught. And so I'm, I'm really pleased and proud of you guys for figuring out how to, to hammer this, hammer this set of bylaws out and, and make some adjustments along the way. And Jeanette, thank you for all your hard work on it, too. One of the, yeah, oh my gosh, yeah. So one, one of the things I do want to ask, well, two things. Patrick, is it okay if I go ahead and ask some questions? Yeah. I'm curious about the relationship of the Administrative Director to the board. And, and who is, is the Administrative Director the one who's actually going to get down into the weeds to set up policies and procedures and all of the, you know, have it, have staff lined up and ready to open the door and get to work on a certain day? Is that the job of that person or is the board?
It's, it's the Administrative Director. That, that person will be the, the lead person in charge of operating the facility, creating the, the environment, the expectations, the policy, ensuring the policy gets followed, ensuring that services are delivered in the manner that we expect them to be. Essentially, that the Administrative Director is like a CEO or an ED, somebody who is ultimately responsible for the day-to-day. And, and the Governance Board, they are responsible to the Governance Board.
Yeah. That's, that's the way I would have added to that exactly, Patrick, that the Administrative Director is accountable to the board to implement the policies and strategies of the board. So the board doesn't run the center, but it establishes governance and it determines whether or not the Administrative Director is adequately meeting the mission and purpose of the institution. And if she or he is not, the board replaces the Administrative Director.
Okay. That, thank you. That's helpful. And my, my only other question was, you know, all along the way, from the very start, we've worked hard to try and get representation from the general community or consumers, folks who have experience in, in, with behavioral health, you know, to add that kind of real-life wisdom. And so I'm wondering, is, where do you foresee the opening for those folks? I mean, would that be like the Program and Benefits Committee? Or, I mean, how do you, how, how will the community be able to share their joys or concerns or ideas with, with this?
I think, I think there's two or three places. And I think there's a very real place on the Board of Directors for that. I think you also noticed that we did the committee structures so that it was partially board members, but not exclusively board members. And so that creates a number of avenues where committee, where community interests can be broader. I also think, you know, the BHLC continues to be a vibrant, dynamic organization that has subsets to it with dozens of constituents. So I think that becomes another conduit for it. I think the other thing that Sarah and Bob have encouraged us to do is even for ourselves, say, the two seats that LMH has, is to think maybe a little bit differently about, maybe that's not Jeanette and Russ. You know, maybe that's Jeanette and a, a patient that we've worked with a number of times through our crisis work in the emergency room. Or maybe it's one of our peer counselors. Or maybe it's a partner or organization that we work closely with. I think we've kind of opened up our blinders a little bit about what that could be.
Great.
I would agree. Yeah.
And I would also say that, like, because the ultimate governance for this, you know, with the funding arrangement lies with the Board of County Commissioners, the, you know, we, we encourage public input through all of our, for all of our service areas. So I think that feedback coming to Commissioners saying, hey, you know, we, we have some, you know, some, some questions or some concerns, or here's a new service, or here's some things that, that we think we should explore, you know, like we have today in terms of the Commission and the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition, that, that will still, all that's still in place.
Right. Yeah, I mean, because this is one document. There'll be that funding agreement that also will have significant, and they'll have a lot of oversight to that piece of it as well. And that, that'll be open for, for folks.
And I just, I just want to say that I think if you look at the work that is currently being done right now, you know, that we started two years ago to improve the system, there's a work group structure and there is, there is a lot of community participation in those work groups. Honestly, I think those, those work groups are a lot more vibrant and energetic sometimes than, than some of the processes where you have community, you have community meetings where a whole bunch of people descend and they don't get a lot of work done. But if you look at the work groups that are, for example, helping to shape a medical director search. We have physicians that are going to be a part of that conversation. We have an APRN that's working from in the emergency department. We have the medical director from Burt Nash. That expertise is helping to inform that process. If you look at the work that's being done in prevention, that coalition has law enforcement and the superintendents, all four of them from the, from the school districts and their med, medical, I mean, their mental health, their mental health team. So we've put in place this work group structure where we are constantly pushing ourselves to say, how can we be more inclusive and who is not at this table yet? And how do we find them and how do we bring them into the process? And I, I think there's always room for improvement, but I, I think it looks a little bit different than it has before. And there's always opportunity for the community to say, I'd like to be a part of things. We have a, a lived experience representative on the BHLC who is on the BHLC because they sought us out and said, "I want to be a part of the leadership structure here. I'm not, I'm not completely sure that I'm comfortable with the way things are going." And she is now at the table and has a voice, you know, "You can't be about me without me," is one of Sandra Dixon's sort of themes. And we constantly remind ourselves and we need to keep reminding ourselves that diversity and making sure that the lived experience perspective is at the, at all of our tables.
I, I would also add that on, at least on Burt Nash's board, and I, and I believe at LMH's, that our boards are made up of community members. And, and they will have us say so as well as to their feelings about how things are progressing in terms of our role and our connection. And on, on the Burt Nash board, we definitely have a requirement for representation, actual representation of consumers and parents of consumers. So we, we, you know, so there'll be multiple layers, multiple avenues. So we, we, you know, so there'll be multiple layers, multiple avenues for that input to be provided and clear direction.
A quick question for Sarah, this is Commissioner Kelly. How, we don't really have any other governance. I mean, we, we work with a lot of community partners, Douglas County, and you know, in some instances give significant amount of funds to those community partners. Is this, how does this relate? How is it different than our relationship with Lawrence, Douglas County Public Health or even Burt Nash? Or even, can you just sort of walk us through how this might be different, if it has any similarities at all, just so we can get some context for that and how it's different than our other community partner relationships?
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, you're right. And I, and I think it's one of those things when we use words like partnership and governance, some folks might not have a good understanding as to what we're talking about. We, this would be our first formal governing relationship with an entity in, with, set up like this. Most of, like, we, we fund, 16% of our total budget goes to human service providers and, and community partners in Douglas County, and most of those we have a community partner arrangement. So you have no real, in most of those arrangements, you know, with the exception of like public health, you, you probably don't put people on their boards. You, you know, they're, they have their own boards that, and they're separate 501(c)(3)'s or are different 501s depending on how they're aligned. And we have an agreement with them where we give them funds to do great work in the community and they report back to us as to how that work is done. And in some arrangements like Douglas, like, like the health department, there's specific, you know, local agreements that govern, that we have appointments on those. But this, but this would even, you know, but in essence, still, the health department is an independent, is an independent health department and there's a specific statute that allows that. Because this is really funded with taxpayer dollars more directly than it could be if it was just run by a hospital per se, which is why we really tried to create this type of governance structure where both the county and the, and essence, the operator, which will consist of both LMH Health and Burt Nash, sit on this board to provide that oversight and leadership for the group that is in the building doing the work on a day-to-day basis. Does that, did I get it, what you were trying to get at?
Yeah, I, I think so. I just wanted to articulate, I just was looking for some articulation of why we went with this rather than, you know, current governance structures that we have elsewhere. And, and I think that's what you were getting into is, if I understand it, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, because Douglas, I mean, Douglas County government will be providing and that, not Douglas County government, but the taxpayers of Douglas County provide the funding for this, it needs a different governance structure than the way we do it with other entities. Is that correct?
Yes. I mean, I, I guess, yes, but I would say, you know, all the funds that we give to community partner agencies are taxpayer dollars. So we, I think we felt that like in this particular arrangement, because we were funding an operations of a particular building, something that was very concise and, and that frankly, I, we felt that the Board of County Commissioners should retain a, a role in the governance of that operation. And, and so, you know, there, it could have been done different ways. I mean, we could have just run this ourselves, which is, in, in some communities, you know, community mental health centers are a part of county government and, and then they run their crisis center. So they're tax-supported as well, but they run them. That's not our setup here. And, you know, this is what felt best for Lawrence, but, you know, we felt particularly because of, there was such a close connection to the desire for this building and the desire for this work associated with the mental health sales tax, as well as other reasons why the county got more heavily invested in behavioral health back in 2017, that, that it was important for us to maintain a pretty substantial leadership role and oversight role in this work moving forward. You know, we don't, you know, we, there's a lot of talk sometimes in human services in this community, like, you know, this isn't just a grant, somebody applied for and, and they lose it and then next year, like, they got to find something else. We are, we are a founder and a part, part of this organ, of this entity and, and we felt it was important to have a more strong tie to that.
Yeah, I'll just make a reflection that I think, firstly, I, I appreciate all the work that's been done to put, you know, this structure together. And we're not voting on it today and we want to make that clear. So, you know, we're still interested in public comment, but I think sometimes for the public, there are so many different ways that, that Douglas County intersects with different partners, whether that's criminal justice partners, other elected officials, community partners, and, and we've now added another different version of that, you know? So we're going to have to do a really good job of helping people understand how, how we're ensuring that their tax dollars and what actual authority we have over this group, you know? And, and I think that's just, that's a complicated wrinkle, but I think it's one to be mindful of and thoughtful of is that, you know, we've, we've zipped through this really quickly and, and it's going to take a lot more to help make sure that our taxpayers really feel like we're, we're being smart about this and, and so just, just some, just reflections on it. It doesn't bother me, but I think it, it's something we need to be thinking about.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have one other question. And this goes, I think, also to public perception, but I think also the, like, kind of the culture of the two organizations. I can, I think every, I think you all understand this kind of merger, this, this new partnership in governance, but I'm wondering how you're going to help your middle management and, and kind of employees who are doing the work, how, how are, I would think that it'll take some work to help folks understand this, this relation, this working relationship that where you're, in some ways, you're two become one in, in, in this crisis center. You really, I, how do you think that's going to go? Do you feel like there's a, a kind of a, a general sense that everybody's on board, on the same team? Or do you think you, you're going to have some work to do with the cultures of each organization to, you know, to, to work out territoriality or?
Right. I, I will say that we've been talking about this for some time with our staff and giving them a heads up that we've been working towards down this road. And it really isn't a merger, it's the creation of a whole new entity focused on the operation of the, the crisis center. And it does mean pulling in some existing teams and some of the work we've done with some of those team members, especially some of the leadership in those team members, is we've said, you need to start talking differently and, and, and looking at things differently and planning for what this could look like in, in 18 months, 24 months. And what steps can you be taking right now to prepare for that? How can we begin to shift services now so that when this opens up, you're ready for that and you're already working together well? So I, I think, you know, at least on the Burt Nash side, and, and I'm sure there will be people who say they, they need more information, more work, and gosh, so do we as we work through this. But I think on the Burt Nash side, the team is ready for this. They're ready to move in this direction because they know that the expertise the hospital brings is expertise we don't have and the expertise that will bring is expertise the hospital doesn't have in certain areas and the result will be better services for clients. So I believe our team, at least at the Burt Nash side, is, is really ready for this and excited. There's a hundred thousand things we have yet to cover and learn, but I, I believe they're, they're ready for it.
You know, Patrick, you said earlier that three years ago, we might all have not envisioned this. And I think in that way, we, this could not have been done two or three years ago. And this collective journey that we've been on with the Behavioral Health Leadership Coalition and these efforts have been principal to that. And, and that, to your point, Commissioner Thelman, is true, even in the context of this relationship between Burt Nash and LMH, where we are now really exploring new ideas around peers and around crisis evaluation and support and what's the best way to do that. This is really even more inclusive than that. So not only do Patrick and my team have to get along, but we also have to bring in Heartland Radac and DECA and our other partners to make sure we're all on the same page. I think that's an important connection to this notion of governance and the earlier comments about the administrative director. Ultimately, this is one team. And just like we as governance partners have to figure out how to come together to create a unified mission and strategy and purpose for this Turning Point Crisis Center, the administrative director also has to knit together that team. And it has to be one team. And so I think Patrick, I see Patrick shaking his head because he and I both know that, frankly, Jeanette knows that and Stephen knows that. We probably all have a little bit of trepidation about that because that's a new sandbox to play in and nobody owns it right now and nobody gets to exactly define all those rules. But it's central to this being successful. And I think even more broadly, what we know about, you know, the complexity that Bob referred to earlier with these folks is it's the only way to do it and to do it well. And so if we don't do that, if we don't figure out how to lay, lay down our arms at the door and go in together in collective mission, then we have not done right by each other and our patients and our community. And I think we're already past knowing that and we're ready to do it.
Right. I, I, I agree. And, you know, and we've had some real opportunities over the last three, four months to really push that forward as a result of, of the pandemic that we're dealing with. Our teams have really started to come together to figure out how to best support each other and do the work collaboratively. And so it's really been a, a good opportunity to begin testing how we do this moving forward.
I really, I, I really appreciate your, both of your comments and, and amen to all of that. I think that that's the right spirit and trepidation is in there, but also great confidence that we have the kind of people who will put aside egos and do the work of being, being one team, you know, for the, for the service of all. So I'm, I'm excited to hear you both in that space and gosh, it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful to, to know that we're at this point. And thank you so much. That's just, that's huge.
Thank, thank you for that support and, and your push and help in moving us in that direction. And again, I think that part of the reason we've set the structure up is to be able to carry that philosophy and that desire to do it as a partnership and in collaboration in perpetuity.
Russ, that was beautifully said. I mean, and that gives me a ton of confidence moving forward. When, when, when a group can admit it's vulnerable and it's in a place where it's a little uncomfortable, I think we're really on that edge that we talked about, that we need to be on to be high performing. We're used to structures where one person is the boss. That's, that's a convenient structure, but that is not the world we live in. And, and to recognize the vulnerability of not, of having to have dispersed leadership, having to have dispersed governance, which is what you're talking about there, I think that's really powerful and it speaks to the work that you all have done. That is the only way we're going to move forward in this. One person cannot have all of the answers. One entity cannot have the, the answers. It's one reason we have three commissioners, you know, instead of just one. And it's one reason we have multiple elected officials. So I was really beautifully said and, and I, I appreciate you sharing. That, that gives me some insight into some of the process that, that you all went through to get to where you are today.
I think that, thank you, Patrick. I think that is an accurate reflection. And I also think going back a level to Nancy's comments, because her comments weren't only about governance and leadership, right? You also talked about the teams doing the work. And, and there's still, in full disclosure, Patrick, there's still work to be done on that front. You know, Patrick and I and Bob and Sarah and Jeanette and Stephen and Jason and all of our partners at BHLC have had a couple of years to kind of figure each other out and to trust each other. And so that needs to occur at the, at the middle management level and at the staff level. And that's a very real challenge and, and we are not done, we are not there yet. But in my experience, if leadership isn't there, staff won't get there. And I really do believe that leadership is committed to that notion that you just outlined, Patrick, that this is something we're going to do together. You don't get to go run around to mama and tell her on your brother, you guys got to work it out. And I think we will stay there and, and candidly, I think it'll take us a year or two to get there. But I think we're at the right starting place.
Can, can I just jump in on one thing here? Because I think it's, it's a really important question and I think you've all spoken really powerfully. You know, next week, you're going to get to hear some more from the folks that are doing the work. And I want to make sure that we lift up and celebrate the work that has been done so far and that the work we're really seriously doing, you know, to do that blending and to do that integration work. And there's been tremendous results that we can point to. You know, we started this three years ago. It took a while to get in for a psychiatry or med appointment, wherever you were going. Burt Nash and LMH and Heartland and the coalition have worked together to bring more psychiatrists to town, more than anybody imagined was possible, with less support than the county thought it needed. And as a result, we've gone from a three-month wait to get in for a psychiatry appointment to a three-day wait. And if you're in crisis, you can get in the same day. That work is tremendously important. We have peers at the library, at the housing authority, at Burt Nash, in the hospital emergency department, and those peers are teaching us, the physicians, the nurses in the emergency department, how to show up differently, how to be more, how to be more compassionate. And that integrated crisis team project, you know, it's not just an emergency department project, it's a group of people who, if we're going to respond mobily to people in the community so they don't come to the, to the, to the emergency department, that's a blended group of people. It's a blend of Burt Nash people and hospital people and Heartland Radac people and DECA people. So I don't want us to lose sight of, you know, we, we've been doing this work well before the building and we're going to keep doing this work while, before that building comes online. And, and, and at the ground level, from my perspective, those staff members are all committed to the what. It's what we're trying to figure out is how you get from A to B and why it matters. And they're all in. It's just a matter of working through it.
Well, I, I only have one sort of recommendation, one sort of ask when this comes back on our regular agenda item. I think one thing, I would love to have some more members of our Behavioral Health Coalition joining us that day, just to hear those perspectives. You talked about Heartland Radac being involved and DECA being involved. And I think it, it would be great to hear their perspectives, you know, I'm not necessarily looking for an endorsement, but I'd just like to hear from them a little bit about how that works. But also ask Russ and Patrick, if you, if you might ask the chairs of your But also ask Russ and Patrick, if you, if you might ask the chairs of your boards. Because this really relies on your individual boards. If we lose strength in LMH Health or in Burt Nash and their individual boards. It can make this a really dicey situation and I, I know that they are. I'm sure they're updated and 100% on board now, but I just think it's important that we recognize that. The sustainability, not just today and six months and five years down the road, but 20 and 30 years down the road. This has to be, this has to be strong and the responsibility that lies on. LMH's board and Burt Nash's board to do that work.
Absolutely, absolutely, you know, we, the BHLC members have been integral in helping us. Conceive of how this looks and picking it apart and putting it back together. They actually now have a copy of this for them to begin weighing in and giving us feedback. And so to a certain degree, we do want their endorsement, we want their support. Because they're actually named in here as a group of oversight, so we definitely want that. And absolutely with respect to the chairs of our respective boards. I know my board's been aware of conceptually what we're doing, but absolutely need that full endorsement and support going forward. So thank you for that.
Any other comments or questions? We have a 5:30 business meeting, which will start in 12 minutes, so. For those of you, the members of the public that have joined us here, we did have a little bit of a glitch starting this work session. So we're going to have a separate link for our 5:30 meeting, so if you're looking for our 5:30 meeting, you're going to have to exit out of this Zoom meeting. Go back to our website, find the link for our 5:30 meeting. We think we've got that set up in the webinar format that we typically do. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, but want to leave space, offer space for any more questions or comments, commissioners, panelists. Well, thank you all so much for being here and even, even more, thank you for all the hard work that you've put into this. I, I know our community is stronger because of the work you've put in, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
And with that, we will adjourn until our 5:30 business meeting.